Okay, we're gonna call the county board meeting for Tuesday, July twenty second, twenty twenty five to order roll call.
Wilhelm.
Here.
Stender.
Here.
Reamer.
Here.
Gusey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vitek.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Ader excused. Mendel.
Here.
M-Merdig.
Here.
Ellifson.
Here.
Trudeau.
Here.
Negro.
Here.
Metzinger.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Ray excused Kinney.
Here.
Pufal. Pufal. Frannick excused. Sixteen present.
Okay, thank you. We'll have a moment of silence and followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic it stands.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the amended agenda amended under regular agenda item F. We need a motion.
Ron. Roth Stender will make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Ron makes a motion. Second.
I'll say it.
Tom seconds it. All those in favor say aye. Pose. Motion carried. Is there public comment online? Anyone online for public comment? Anyone online for public comment? Anyone online for public comment? Anyone in the audience or in this room for public comment at this time? Anyone in the room for public comment? Anyone for public comment here? Hearing none. We will go to item four. Presentation Ashland Mayor Matt McKenzie and Ashland City Administrator Brand Casera, strategic plan.
Here.
Yeah.
We wanted to take this opportunity. Let me introduce myself. I'm Matt McKenzie down in here in Ashland and many of you are out there and it's good to see you again. We want to do at the city, this is Mr. Brand Casera, these are our city administrators. Um, I've got the handout for you. I'll leave with the clerk here that's a listing of our current city council and their phone numbers to hold for.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Can we share?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, what what we're trying to do is is better our relationship with all of our neighbors. Um, and I don't think I don't want to say that we think it's bad, but we think we could do better and we want to communicate better. And openly, you know, have others understand um what we're trying to accomplish and what we have accomplished because there's a lot of rumors going on. You know how that is. Um, so with that, um, you know, we've had Mr. Grady over to talk to the city council. We appreciate that. Um, we've asked for an opportunity. We just did a new strategic plan. And that plan is is going to be for the next five years. Um, and that's the what we work off of to accomplish what we've accomplished. Um, so we know there's some rumors out there about different things and we'll try and address some of those, but so that you know what the city is looking at doing for the next five years. Our strategic plan is set up where we broken down into infrastructure, safe safety, health and secure community, housing, economic strengths and good governance. Um, our and these are our overall goals and what we do is we develop an implementation plan based off of this. This is the council got together and decided these will be the goals for for our city over the next five years. And then under the infrastructure, one of the things that we have there, a couple noteworthy things we want to point out is our infrastructure is much larger than what the community really needs. The community has been losing um losing people and we're not as spread out as we used to be and it's expensive to maintain all that infrastructure. But it's not an easy thing to just shut some down. So with that, um, you know, we've been working on it in in different areas. Uh, most recently, um, water intake in the sewer system. Everybody knows that the the city had a bad reputation of of uh having sewage overflow. And we've we've tackled that issue um with the last strategic plan and and it's been successful for us. Um, we haven't had an overflow in the last five years. We've had one. And remember about two or three years ago, um, we had that massive snow load and then it got warm and it rained a couple inches on top of it. Everybody flooded out. That's our last overflow event. Um, the rain we had last week is a good example of where we're at. Um, we had better than two inches of rain, um, which in in the past would have caused overflows all over the place. We did not have one signal overflow. Um, we didn't even have any backups on the the sewer line. And part of that is directly related to what we did was called cure in place where they put a sleeve inside of the old sewers and then cure it so that it's like an internal pipe inside there. Um, what that has done is it's allowed um greater capacity of the sewers. So when we 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 clean them before we did them, um, and this has been, uh, how many years have we been working on this brand that's?
It's been right around six or seven years now.
So it you know, it's it's gotten where we feel pretty comfortable um with with saying that we've got this problem beat. Um, and we want to keep it that way. Um, and so of course, many have seen the the new pipe that we're putting in the lake and now there's been a lot of discussion about that, but the bottom line is we were more or less ordered to do it by the the DNR um to make sure that we have a backup water system. Um, we were also having some problems with uh things that were getting into our our water supply, which caused us to, you know, have to look at cleaning our filters more often, um, doing some maintenance like that. Um, so part of this is is uh started out the DNR said they were going to pay for most of it and they estimated it was going to be three million dollars. As I think most of you are aware, the actual price tag came in at around uh ten million. Um, but that's the bullet we had to bite. It comes out of our utility funds, not your your property tax, but utility workers. And that's why it's important for us if you're within the city limits that we have you hooked into our sewer system to is to help pay that cost. Um, water, uh, you know, there's a lot of discussion about surface water and stuff, but that's what we have and and that's what we've gone forward with. Um, so with that, we've also been aggressive with our road, the street resurfacing. And I think if you tried to drive around Ashland at all this summer, you can see that, you know, it's been ambitious. Um, the biggest thing we're running into here this in in the coming future, and I'm sure you're dealing with it as well, is the money to do future roadwork. It's just not as much there. So one of the things that we'll have to work out in our strategy is is what do we prioritize? Um, we've been fortunate enough to to deal with a lot of stuff though. You know, for many years, we we heard complaints that, you know, what about the East End? And if if you drive on the East End, you'll see we have new roads over there. Um, you'll see that we've been chip sealing, um, you know, milling overlay, if you will, on on the east side of town. And as and and I think if you look on the west side, you'll see all the way from city heights across, there's been a lot of roadwork done in the last few years and that's all related to the strategic plan that we're coming off of. Um, but we still have work there. Um, one of the other things under infrastructure is our parks. Uh, we've had a a a we all have suspicions about whether we have enough or should have more and where should they be? Um, but our question was is how do we rank compared to other cities across the the country? And kind of what we suspected is we have a lot more than most other places. Um, where that comes to bear on us is how do we maintain it? And believe me, I one of my most frequent calls is the grass across from the Breakwater Restaurant. When you gonna mow it? And, you know, why haven't you mowed it? And, you know, it's there's a changing of the guard, if you will. And I I told others it it's kind of like hair. You know, everybody's got their own idea what the right length of hair is. Um, some like it short, some like it long. So, you know, we're trying to sort that out. Um, we're getting more and more people that want to see it longer. Um, we've also, and you've seen it, we've gotten some grant money. Uh, Mr. Casera has done this for us, uh, to get, you know, more flowers and stuff within our city. Uh, you you one of the other biggest complaints we had this year is the size of the flower baskets. Um, you know, some thought they were too small, but they are actually the same size they've always been. Um, when you first put them out, they're not as big as when you finally take them down. Uh, but we've also added some flower pots along Main Street and it's some of the you may recall that we had boulevards that used to be open that had some flowers and stuff. And our goal is to see that happen again and uh start at work on that. Um, you'll see that that we've had workers uh working on Main Street to keep things weeded. Um, and also now they're opening up some of those trees that are along the boulevards in there. Um, the the we want to per- one of the other things we hear a lot about is the deep water boat launch. Um, the new boat launch down here at the Superfund site. Uh, it actually took a lawsuit from the governor to get us our money. Um, the the state had said give them the money to do the the deep water boat launch and then it was held up by a committee at the in the state. Um, took us a couple of years. We couldn't get by it. Uh, the the governor actually sued and got a got an order that they could not hold back money, um, at which we got some of our money for the boat launch. Um, and and you're going to see that uh taken more shape here over the next year. Um, you're gonna you should see some new projects too. If you haven't been down there, there's a new uh comfort station, if you will, uh bathroom known by Kerr Park. Uh, that is open now. Um, one of the other complaints we get is about homelessness and and this falls under our next category, safe and healthy and secure. Um, and there is a lot of work that's gone into this. Some of this is directly related to housing in that uh we had to have a plan for housing. The last strategic plan dictated that. Um, we needed an emergency shelter. We needed a transitional housing unit. We needed more uh income based housing. And then finally, if we can get more market rate housing, that's what we wanted. Um, and that's what the staff is directed to work on. Uh, and they did it, you know? Maybe some people don't like it much, but it is nonetheless something you gotta have. Um, the emergency shelter was open. Uh, then the next step in that is the income based housing, which I think most of you are aware of down there uh by quick trip on the east side of town. Um, so then the next part is uh the the income base. And I I think some of you have heard and if you've been watching, uh, we're getting a new apartment unit in the Beazer property where where Tomelson's used to be and Roffers. Um, we're expecting about a when it's all said and done, we're expecting about a hundred and fifty new apartments in there. Um, they're they're committed to at least a hundred and thirty. Um, and and this took some work to to get done, but uh that's one of the things that was done. Um, the next part of that is enforcement of the unhoused. Um, and, you know, a lot of people refer to them as homeless. Uh, many of them are homeless by choice. And, you know, if you notice in January, you don't see them there, but, you know, it's sort of like the like the birds coming north, you know, as they show up in the spring at some point. Um, with that, uh, the commitment that we're going to do our enforcement of the codes or the ordinances that the the city has. Um, and we've started doing that and and uh, the the other thing is is carrying that into property maintenance. We have some blighted properties in town and working on those. And one of the goals under the last strategic plan was to come up with a plan to raise houses. We're basically tearing them down. And I know the county is looking at doing the same thing. Um, you know, let's get them off the landscape and and use that property for something else. Um, so we've actually raised one house already um over across from where Tomelson's used to be on Main Street. That's that, you know, a lot of people say, well, you know, why did you do that? Well, it's been seven years. We've been trying to get them to come into compliance and they just haven't done it. Now, to get to that, um, it took some work behind the scenes in changing our ordinances to allow us to be able to do this. Uh, we had to get permission, if you will, through uh the courts and come up with a system where we basically get a warrant to go on to the property, clean it up. And then once we've done that, then uh we had to change the rules so that we it allowed us to put a lien on the property so that we could get it into a position where we had some leverage to do something with these properties. And that's in in work right now. Um, there's some other things and I know another complaint maybe some of you hear about too is there's a big old apartment building on uh Third down here that uh had a fire and there was some people, you know, squatting in there as well. Um, it's been boarded up. Uh, that's an interesting one because it's it's an estate issue, but you're going to see that one come down here too within the next week or so.
It's actually coming down today.
Today, there you go. So, you know, we're we're working on those. Uh, we understand that you have one on the east side of town, kind of over there across the street from Covers a block or so. Um, and we've we've talked, uh, Mr. Grady and myself and Brand have talked about working together. We know you have some other properties in town that we'd like to see something done with. And we want to work together on that to see. Um, some of them will probably never be homes again, but it doesn't mean we can't get that into a property that could be uh attached to one of the neighboring properties where we get it back on the tax roll. Um, the one other thing under safety I want to mention is we're pursuing a grant to get basically some, if you will, park rangers. Um, and our goal is to employ them on the walking trail in our downtown city parks because we have some people that say they don't feel comfortable walking these areas based on what they've seen recently. And we want to address that that issue directly. So, you know, that's one of the things we've applied through the through the cops program uh to get a couple of of part-time officers to, you know, strategically deal with that. Um, I've talked about the housing, economic strength. Um, I'd like Brand, you know, one of the rumors we hear is that we're operating in the red. We're no more in the red than than you are. I mean, obviously you gotta spend money before you can get some of the money. But we're in good, strong fin- financial shape. And I'll ask Mr. Casera to kind of give you a quick rundown where we're at there.
Sure. So council actually has a policy in place that requires us to have a minimum of thirty percent of our general fund uh operating revenue in reserve. And for the seven years I've been here, that number has been anywhere between thirty-one and thirty-eight percent. So we've never dropped below that thirty percent. And what that means is we've been, we have about three to three and a half million in reserve at all times for uh the city in case something were to happen. Uh, we have also maintained an A plus plus bond rating during that time. We are audited on an annual basis. We've never had a material finding, to my knowledge, in the last two decades. So the financial strength of the city, although, I mean, I think probably everyone knows it's challenging in this area with revenue growth. The city has, I think, done a really decent job uh in making sure that we're fiscally healthy, number one, in our year-to-year finances, but also maintaining a reserve that would cover any shortfalls should the economy really start to uh uh sour on us. So, yeah, I think we're we're very happy with where we stand financially.
One of the things that's in our strategic plan for this next year is to lo- look at what we do for economic development and for tourism and see if we can bolster that up some. Um, we want to when what we want more people to know Ashland and where Ashland's at and wanting to come up here um to Ashland, not to Bayfield, not to Washburn, but to Ashland. Um, and we think we've got what we can do there. Um, but one of our other targets over this next five years is to, you know, gain some new businesses. Um, we're going to try and and pursue at least two new businesses per year if we can. Um, and we want to revitalize our our East Main Street at the same time we enhance West Main that we've been working on. Um, you know, we've got some different ideas on the east side. There's been some proposal uh that we we have it uh more of a of a craft area and uh artistry. Um, and and just include that into Main Streets that we have one main street that runs from one side of town to the other, not east or west. So, uh, the that brings us to good governance is part of why we're here today is uh we we're committed to being a strategic partner with the county. Um, also Bad River. Um, and, you know, we want to keep a open communications. We want you to know what we're doing. And we we hope that that'll pay us dividends as well that, you know, we won't have as many rumors floating around. If you hear something you know that just isn't true, you can address that. Um, and and that's our goal is to, you know, have people understand what we're doing. Um, this this strategic plan, um, when you look at what we've accomplished over the last five, uh, we're hopeful that the next five is if it's as successful will will really help. And uh I know sometimes people, it doesn't seem like there's any rhyme or reason to it, but um, we take this implementation plan and give it to the staff and say, here, this is how you need to prioritize your work. And that's what they work on. If it's outside of that, they need to come and get permission from the council. And we have a seven-person council. Um, so if you you have questions and it's something in a specific neighborhood, please address the the council because ultimately they're the ones that make the decisions. Um, if there's a tie vote, then I get to vote. And I think I've been mayor now for just a little over three years and that's happened three times that I can recall. Um, so it doesn't happen often. Um, if we want the counselors to hear what's going on. Um, with that, uh, Brand, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to add one thing is and that's to thank the county. Uh, the county health department really helped the city out in um basically condemning two homes that have been huge problems. And uh because of that work with the uh health department, we were able to get the occupants out of both of those homes. And uh actually, we now have raised orders on both of those. And as of last week, the city took ownership over the yellow house by Burger King, which had been a real issue with drugs and we'll be raising that property very soon. So, um, I just feel like those are the sort of things that when we talk about good governance and strategic partnerships, this is how different units of government can work together to achieve the goals of of both the county and the city. So thank you for for helping us out with that.
We also appreciate the help we get from from law enforcement. Um, obviously, we don't have our own jail. Um, we have a lot of people that wish we had our own jail and they'd like to tell us who we should throw in there as well. But we all know it doesn't work that way, but we do appreciate the cooperation between law enforcement. With that, it's true. We'll just work our way around this way.
Yeah.
Please go.
Um, do you know what is going on with Northland College? And is that in your strategic plan?
Northland College, as we all know, is closed. We had a meeting with the what they've done is they've turned it over to a a firm that's out of basically Boston. Uh, and we met with two individuals there. One of them is an attorney and the other one is an accountant. Um, they're going to be taking over the records of Northern, if you will. So like, uh, there is apparently there's there's a law or there's rules on closing up uh educational facilities. And Northern is going through that process. Um, one of the things they have to deal with is after Northern closes, if you went to school there, how do you get a transcript if you need a transcript of your college days? Um, you know, different things like that. Um, this firm will be doing all that. They'll if if you have those issues, that's who you're going to contact. Um, they're looking at selling off assets. Um, and Northern was in a good situation where they didn't hold mortgages on much much of their property. Um, but they did have creditors that they owed money to. Um, so their first obligation is to to clear the creditors. Um, and that's what they're working on now. I think you've seen that there's some houses near campus that have been put up for sale. And what they've told us is that basically all of them have accepted offers on them. Um, it's just a matter of going through the closing. Um, so you're going to see some of that. They're they're looking at dealing with the east side of the highway and then working over to the west side. They're going to be responsible for security and for the fire protection. Um, they've reached out to us about, you know, the fire protection, working through that. Um, but otherwise, they've been somewhat guarded on on what their plans are. Um, there's a lot of different people that are out there that have ideas what it should be. Um, but the city has said we've got our own issues to watch. If there's something we can do to help, you're our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. What can we do? But for the most part, they're doing what they need to do through their board and this firm that they have hired. So they're really, as far as we're aware of, and I think they would have shared with us, we don't know that they have any plans for the west side of the highway other than looking at what they their options are. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's all we know about it.
You you do you have that figured into strategic plan at all?
No, not really. I mean, we have economic development and housing in our plan. But, you know, as far as a specific thing there, um, you know, we want to keep open-minded. Obviously, there's several people that would like to see that be used as a educational institution, which it's currently zoned for. Um, but the other side of it is something came in, some corporation came in and took that over. That's going to be good for our community too, in that it goes back on the tax rolls. Right now, it's it's not on the taxes. Um, so you you know, our position in the city is we're going to sit back and listen to everything. Um, it's really up to to Northland what they do with it at this point. And we're there to assist and explain what our zoning is and, you know, what they're they they can expect through some of that. Go ahead, Ben.
My question was on Northland College too. I live a block from North and facing it, so it's never out of sight, out of mind. It's been a nice asset in the community in that location for that neighborhood. Lots of us have walked there until recently when they put up no trespassing signs on the foot bridges. We're going to lose events that were held at Northland. I think it would be good to try to identify what they contributed to the community in terms of events, cultural things, uh, things they were involved with because there's going to be some gaps with them closing. I would also like the city and the county to consider working together to see if we could be proactive on what becomes of that campus next. I know the city has capacity to create a TIF district there, um, which if anybody's going to put it back on the tax rules, they likely would need to create a TIF district. Um, the advantage of getting it back on the tax rules is obvious. We'd get more taxes, both of us. If it turns into um something that's a nonprofit, we won't benefit from those taxes. And if it just gets carved up in a way that doesn't work as well as something else might have if we were proactive, I would prefer to see us be proactive to the extent that they're willing to talk to us and see what we can do to try to make the best of what becomes of that campus in the future rather than waiting. Because my concern about waiting from what I hear is I'm not excited about what I hear and most of it's related to nonprofits. I think there's certainly opportunities for housing there and businesses and other things. But, you know, they're busy dealing with what they're dealing with. And I think we have some capacity to try to be proactive and contribute something to what the future holds there.
We've shared information with this firm that's that's dealing with it and they seem very opening, very open to uh to talk to us and others um as far as the development opportunities there. So we hold hope that, you know, it's going to work out in as many people as possible's best interest. But yes, we want to stay open-minded to all that. Thanks. Anyone else? Go ahead, Drew.
Uh, yeah, Matt, could you explain or talk to the the difference between your strategic plan and your comprehensive plan? Are they the same? Do they overlap? How do you reconcile that?
Um, the the biggest difference between our comprehensive plan and our strategic plan is is the comprehensive plan is a plan whereas it that that is more just a general overlay. Whereas our street strategic plan is specifically targeted at certain things. Brand, can you?
Yeah, I think that like so a comprehensive plan is typically like an overall vision for the community. A strategic plan is actually specific goals that we've identified. And then we also craft action steps to achieve those goals. So what we're doing is we're making sure that there's accountability to make those things in the strategic plan happen. Comprehensive plan is really just, as you know, since you're working on it, chapter by chapter, it addresses various things within the community, whether it's zoning or transportation. And it really just uh sort of outlines, here's what we want for the future. But it doesn't actually give you the roadmap to get there and that's the idea behind strategic planning.
Uh, thanks. Just a a a quick follow-up and a plug for uh Ashland County Health and Human Services. Wonder how you appeal about the Narcan dispensers that are made available at the police department and Ash- at the health department?
Well, I I'll tell you this and and I say this on a lot of things is I don't really want to weigh in on that. Um, in that, you know, health and human services is your thing and, you know, and and I joke. And, you know, and I jokingly refer to this to others, is we have our own barber to watch. We don't want to get into your business and, and second guess anything that you guys may be doing. We want to work together as a team and, and we want to support your efforts, whichever direction you as a board goes with, and we hope you'll do the same thing with us as the council makes its decisions.
Yeah, I just wondering if you found it helpful at all?
Um, I guess, you know, obviously, there's a need for it. And I think Health and Human Services would be the best group to ask, did it, did it do what you needed it to do? So, sorry, I can't answer it beyond that. Anybody else I didn't do that? Mayor? I trust you this.
Thank you guys for coming here. I think this is a good step for all of us as we look at our futures. And so for you mentioning tourism and tourism dollars. So go up day and night with the wife. We sit at Hoops right on the lake. What is it going to take for Ashland to leverage the lake? We, I came back five years ago. How do, you, you talk about tourism, but they come here because of the lake. And we ain't got nothing down on the lake. We got one restaurant overlooking it. So that's the first piece, I'd say, is, are you got, is that a part of your vision as far as the strategic plan?
Part of our vision for, for the city, if you will, is more eating establishments. And I, I think you, you all know, based on 514 Main that was your building and, and we bought it, our hope was, was to turn that into an eatery. And we actually had a developer that was interested in doing it. But the climate changed. And honestly, they were going to have like a tap room in there. But all of a sudden, tap rooms are so plentiful that they aren't as attractive as they used to be. And they found it basically impossible for them to get their funding to do what they wanted to do. So we still have that. We're looking at doing something with that. As far as other eateries, you know, we do what we can. What we want to do is we want to see tourism starting to pick up here so that there's more of an interest to be in Ashland. You know, I think that the housing complex is a, a good example of that, that shows others see that this community is going somewhere, that they're willing to invest, you know, the kind of money to build a hundred and fifty unit apartment building. That's going to be market rate. It's not, none of it is, is income-based. It's all going to be open market rate. So one of the things that we're targeting under our strategic plan is a better working relationship with tourism through, through the chamber. And a better understanding of how we can maybe do a, a better job. We're not saying that they're not doing a decent job. What you're saying, we want to see things targeted more specifically for Ashland and get more recognition for Ashland, to get more people coming here. Obviously, restaurant chains, whatever, you're going to see it. So if you have other ideas, you want to see two new businesses a year, help us, help us do that.
If I can add to that, also, it is challenging, obviously, the waterfront because of, it's a lot of old industrial uses. We are, first of all, the Ordox Upland area, you see, you see the work that we've, we've done at the Ordox. The Upland area, which is about ten acres, city owns. That's something that we're looking to master plan in the next couple of years, which would bring in additional residential as well as commercial into that area. Because I share exactly what you're saying, is the lake is why people come here. And yet, it's very hard to utilize it in a fashion that I think people expect to. Second thing that we're doing is we are meeting with DNR and the owners of the two Coldocks, the two come operation or not. But we are meeting with them because I think we need to start talking about how to come up with a way to reutilize, remove, somehow gain control of those to begin to sort of clean up the waterfront, make it much more attractive for future development. The other thing is with the new boat ramp going in, that obviously will create more activity on the waterfront. We do need to improve our marina, I think, as well. But at the end of the day, I think what we really need to do is hopefully with the development that the mayor referred to with a hundred and fifty units, that now encourages someone to look at the Ordox Upland area, and we start seeing development in that area. And yeah, at some point in time, I would like to see people utilizing our lake front floor recreation, dining, shopping versus what we have today. So it's a long, it's a long process.
I want to point out too, that the Baron Radiator Shop, you know, is one that we're looking at, at developing into concession, if you will, that would have food and beverage so that people can come down there after hours and have a place to go eat, kind of a, a center. Unfortunately, you know, people have labeled it as the wine bar. And realistically, the, the, the wine that we're talking about most often is not the one you drink. So, you know, our goal is to try and get that into a eating place because part of the, the plan is to make Third Street more a part of downtown as well. Go ahead, Ron, please.
You had mentioned about freezing houses.
In the city here, on the east end, there's a house.
Does it have motorcycles in the front yard?
No, that's actually beyond.
Okay.
Okay. That's been there. Have a young lady here who lives across from it. And I guess the county owns it, and we're kind of wondering what's going to happen with that house because people break it in. So.
Yeah, I, I guess, we've, we've been trying to get a handle on empty houses in town because if you have an empty house, there's a greater chance you're going to have issues as far as law enforcement wise. You know, with people monkeying around there, breaking in or whatever. So one of the things we're looking at doing, just so everybody knows it, and it's been talked about, is we're looking at having a permit system. And the goal behind the permit system is to get landowners to keep those properties in use, if not tear them down. So we, we're trying to figure out how to get our arms totally around that. But if you have an issue, and, and I know there's some county homes in there that you guys are kind of stuck with, and we want to work together on what we can do. We know that there's some issues as far as how you can transfer them. What we're hoping that at some point, we've had a chance, Mr. Green, and I've had a chance to talk about this, is maybe there's a situation where you'd have to go to auction on it, but maybe we can get involved if, if the, if it can be gifted to the city and you help us pay for the cleanup, we could raise some of these hoses or get them back onto the market as, as rental profits.
Ron, is it, is the address 2123 Main?
2119.
Yeah. So we have an RFP out to get rid of the asbestos shingles on it, asbestos siding all over the building. So you have to have a specific contractor to do that. So we should hear the RFPs do in two weeks, I think. And as soon as we get that, zoning committee has already given approval to raise the house. And we'll contract with the asbestos abatement company, get it removed. Highway will come in and tear down the house.
Thank you.
Property maintenance is one of the things under our housing strategic plan, and we've put some effort into that. We have one full-time employee and we have a part-time. And I, I think somebody around the room might realize that they don't care who we are. If they see some of the issue, they're going to, they're going to bring it to your attention. And I, I think if you look around town, I'm hoping you'll agree with me that things have cleaned up some. And, you know, they deal with the height of the grass on some of the properties and different things. We still have a few holdouts, but we're working on it. Anybody else? I know you still have another meeting, you know, to go beyond this, and we wanted to keep it as brief as possible with a lot of different things. I want to thank Mr. Casir. He truly is a professional that runs the city. He's been here now seven years. And it's sort of like the Wizard of Oz. I'm just, you know, the voice, he's the real guy behind us. The main that makes everything happen.
Matt, would you be able to give us some kind of summary of your strategic plan so that way we could put it in with our packet online?
Yeah, we could give you the, we're still working on the implementation plan, but we'll send you over electronic copy of our strategic plan, the, the general headlines. Would that work for you? All right, with that, I want to thank you all for being gracious enough not to have the hook and pull us off. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
If you have any questions, give us a show. I'm part-time. I don't know you get back, but I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, now, now we're in the regular agenda discussion action items. Approval of the May 29th, 2025 county board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve, Mr. Metzger?
I, I make a motion for adoption.
Okay, is there a second? Ron, Rich?
This is Huber. I'll second it.
If Huber seconds it, any corrections, changes? Laura?
I'm not listed as being there, but I'm listed all over in some motions and approvals and stuff. So if, if we could get me in there. Oh, does, did I miss that? Because I knew I came in and I had a hard time hearing and had to restart, so. Thank you.
You're, it's good, Laura?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.
Sheriff's Department's HVAC.
All right, so Finance Committee has been dealing with this for the last several months. The HVAC system in the sheriff's department needs, needs to be completely replaced. It's reached the end of its life. And they've, Finance Committee talked to several companies about it, and they decided to accept Jamar's bid as the winning bid. For the cost is going to be roughly $800,000. It's like $798,000, John? $798,000. So Finance Committee voted to approve the, the bid and to make the initial payment with cash we have on hand. We still have $1.1 million from the LACTF money, which was the local aid for tribes and counties that the federal government gave as part of ARPA. We previously dedicated that money towards joint dispatch. But that is now completed, and we still have $1.1 million left. So they decided to make the down payment now with that cash and then defer the remainder of the payment to the budget to decide whether or not to use cash or bond for part of it. Yeah. And I would say, my representative from Jamar is here to answer any specific questions.
Mr. Metzger?
What, what does this HVAC actually do?
It controls all the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning in the building. So for you, for, to put it simply, it's like your air conditioner and furnace in your house. So right now, the boiler is, it can't keep up anymore. And there's not air conditioning in certain parts of the building, like, like the kitchen, that need to be fixed. And some of this is, you know, we have to keep a temperature, somewhat of a stable temperature, just to follow the constitution.
I have another question. Seeing, seeing this is a historical building, have we applied for some type of grant to, to help?
Not, not this building, the jail.
The jail.
The jail.
The jail.
Pardon me.
Yes.
Good. This is for the jail.
It's for the jail, yeah. So we also have Mr. Kenny and Mr. Ellison too, who can answer any questions, how finance was thinking about it.
Mr. Kenny?
The equipment is from 96, so it's essentially end of life. So we started looking at this back in February. We got bids from three firms, selected Jamar at the end. And it really wasn't cost-effective to try to do most of this and put off some of it until later. It made more sense in the long run to replace all of equipment now with modern equipment that works together, designed together, just get the project done. There really wasn't much of anything that could have been extended beyond what it was, but that wasn't cost-effective. In terms of paying for this, you know, one option would be to borrow the entire amount, put it on the debt levy. The next item in the agenda, depending on how the vote goes today, we could borrow from the Northern State Bank and then put it on the debt levy in the coming year. But that would likely, from what we can tell of the budget so far, raise property taxes more than we would be comfortable with. If you remember from the presentation from the city, Brent mentioned that they keep their fund balance at around the 30% mark. At our last finance meeting on Thursday, we talked about a fund balance policy. And the upper end of the target we talked about was at 30%. The unrestricted fund right now that the county has, which is money we could use for anything we want, is nearly 20%. And then the money that the administrator mentioned is in a different pool of money, but it requires reporting when it's used. But we can use it for what we choose. So technically, it's not unrestricted money for accounting purposes, but it's money that because we can use it for what we choose, basically serves as unrestricted. That money, along with what we have, would get us in that 30% range, which is the upper end of the range that we're looking at for a fund balance policy. So what we're proposing is paying what we need to pay upfront on this in August, which would be right around half to pay for equipment to get started. And then, as we go further in budget season and the budget firms up, come back to the board and discuss whether we want to use more of the money in the fund that the administrator mentioned or put some of this on the debt levy. And at that time, we'd have a better idea of what it would look like in terms of property taxes if we did that. But the county is in good shape to, to take money from, it's the LACTF fund and pay for the first portion of this, which we think is going to be right around half. And then consider it later, whether we borrow or use more from this fund.
Any, any other questions on this item at the moment? Okay.
Just one point. Why weren't these items, why don't they have anything in the packet for them?
Yeah. So here's the quote up here. Sorry, it was, it's in the last Finance Committee meeting. John, do you want to go over what it does? You got to use a microphone.
I'm John Cottney with Jamar. I'll just give you a brief overview of the proposal. Pat did a great job by giving you the overview of, you know, everything's past its life, expect and see. So this was a collaborative effort with the county and the sheriff's office on what direction they wanted to go and how we could keep the jail running with a redundancy. Currently, they have like a single point of failure, we call it. So like their air conditioning and their air handling systems only have like one condensing unit. That's the air conditioning portion. The new design, it eliminates a refrigerant inside the building and puts it outside the building in a chilled water system. So instead of having refrigerant that EPA has changed over the, this year and restricts how much can go into the airstream or in a building, makes it kind of very complicated. All the chilling goes outside. Chilled water just gets piped to each unit. That kind of makes sense for the chilled water. The boiler system, they're inefficient. They don't keep up. So both boilers will be getting replaced in the project. And everything in the building is controlled by a building automation system, which is all original controllers. So all the digital controller systems, controller, individual controllers get replaced. And that's on the computer system for the sheriff to monitor. Is there any questions on that? I guess it's a, that's the kind of like high-level overview.
You know, because it's old from 96, we've been putting some money into the system to patch it and replace some things. And if we don't do this, we're going to continue to put more money into band-aging things as they go. And so, looking in the mirror, this would have been a good project, I think, a year or two ago, instead of putting it off as long as we did. And it'll only get more expensive to maintain and replace things as they fail if we don't do this. And it'll only get more expensive to maintain and replace things as they fail if we don't do this.
Bill?
How much of a cost savings in the long run is this going to be, do you think? Or you have any projections, like is it going to save us ten percent or?
I had it on something. Like boilers are typically like thirty percent natural gas savings. Uh, the new chilled water system will be, I would say fifteen, twenty percent more efficient. I can send the numbers over to give us. I thought I had them on one of them. The recent proposal.
Look, Blake?
We have spent a significant amount of time on this discussion. Jamar has been a partner on this and, you know, we started dating them on the front end and we're back to them on the end. And I think that's the right, I mean, we had a local company, we had another company out of Duluth area and Jamar's been the most consistent and I think they're here the most and so they know us. And ultimately, the sheriff and and they're the ones who I think kind of said, hey, this is. So we at the Finance Committee now, we've beaten this horse to death. I think we just need to kind of get going on this because like we said, it's got to be done. And I think when the city said the reason they don't own a jail, you don't want to. They're really expensive, uh, they cost a lot. And so as a county, we have to invest in this, it's part of our jobs. And so I would, I would like to thank Jamar and the sheriff and Dan for getting this to this point and kind of like I said, let's move it on.
Laura?
Will this uh system only support what the current capacity of the jail is? Or will it be able to help with some possible expansion?
Yeah, we have upgraded the size of the chiller uh because it's a redundant system. So theoretically, you couldn't build a new jail and put it behind it, but you could accommodate a maybe a small remodel. If there was room in the jail, I don't know the layout, but.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions? Uh, Bill?
I move for adoption.
Okay. Any other questions? There's a motion on the floor to approve the Sheriff's Department HVAC contract.
Um, I just want a clarification, are you moving to adopt it with the payment method the Finance Committee approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Laura?
I'll second.
Laura second set? Any other questions? Motion's been made and second to approve the HVAC with the financing mechanisms as discussed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now we have a resolution R zero seven dash two zeros two five dash one five oh nine bonding resolution for Sheriff's Department's HVAC. Oh, Pat?
When Finance met last Thursday, we didn't know what method of payment we would be using or what the board would approve. Um, and one option would be to borrow the full amount from the Northern State Bank. Given the vote on the previous item for the Sheriff's HVAC, this item is no longer needed. Uh, so I would make a motion that we remove it from the agenda.
Okay, there is a motion to remove the item from the agenda. Is there a second? Yeah, George, you you want to Tom? Uh, or yes, sorry. Okay, so there's a motion and second to remove the resolution from the agenda. Any questions? Laura?
Again, this one isn't in our packet, so I'm still wondering why this information wasn't in our packet of information for this board meeting.
It wasn't approved until Thursday and we knew that we weren't going to need it, so.
Okay. It's just clear for the public if that stuff is in there, so at least they can peruse it. They shouldn't have to hunt back for this stuff.
Mr. Kenny?
Could we? Laura has a good point here. I mean, it's always nice to have that, these are big items. Could we at least take the documents that were intended here and place them in the file online? So for the matter of a public record, because the board agendas and documents are available for years that the public can then see it, even though it's not here at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so the motion's been made and second to remove the resolution, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Employee handbook update.
Okay, um, Heather, do you want to get in on this one? He's looking at me like a no. So we try, this is an effort to simplify the handbook. The main changes are on the vacation leave portion. There was a lot of questions about that first year of employment. How do people accrue the vacation if they leave in that first year? Do they have to pay it back? And it became an accounting nightmare. So we changed the language to say what this board had decided to do was a year and a half ago, that everybody gets two weeks of vacation upon hire and just left it at that. We also got rid of the portion that gave you previous years of service. Largely because um Mr. Metzger pointed out at exec, that if he came back to work, he would get twenty-eight days of vacation right away. So we removed that section and we're trying to clarify it, make it simpler, so there's no misunderstanding and no misinterpreting. There is um a portion where we changed the per diems, just like we did in the County Board Supervisor Handbook. And then most of the other changes um are just clarifying the um family medical leave section. Oh, and who gets clothing allowance? Just to make sure that we're all on the same page on that. And it's again, so it's clearer and more easily understandable.
Good, Laura?
Um, I noticed in quite a few spots, comp time has been taken out. Staff is not having comp time or it's not flexible or?
Um, in general, we 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 not doing comp time, you have to use use the time within the pay period. Um, and that's been the case for several years now.
But there doesn't seem to be a section that specifically addresses comp time then?
No, that was taken out a couple, like two revisions ago.
Okay.
Um, you know, and for some departments, comp time just doesn't work, like highway department. I I mean, you know, they spend all these hours plowing the roads. And then they want to take comp time in the summer or later in the winter and there's more snow, you know, and it just, it doesn't work. For a lot of our, it doesn't work for the jail, keeping staffed, it doesn't work for the Sheriff's Department deputies. So you just have to use the time within the same pay period.
Any questions on any of those updates?
I know there was a part in here that was really awkward. And it seemed to line out one part of it, but then repeated it in the next part, but I can't find it right now.
Well, I could tell you this is not going to be the last revision.
Probably not.
So if you find it, if you can, if you find it again, please let us know and we'll stick it in the next update.
I will do that.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so we need a motion to approve the employee handbook updates. Clarence? Clarence makes a motion, is there a second? Ron?
Ron Stender will second.
Ron seconds it? Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We have a resolution R zero seven dash two zero two five dash one five one zero. Resolution support of the nonprofit conservation grant awards to the Friends of Copper Falls and a chair recognizes Marty Vitek. Marty?
Uh, Marty Vitek, I I move we approve the resolution.
Is there a second? Laura? Laura sec, now you can second sit? Questions? Could just a brief explanation?
Um, you all had a copy of the resolution in your packet. And the Friends of Copper Falls is a nonprofit group that does exceptional work in Copper Falls. They've written many other grants in the past to improve the park and provide opportunities. They purchased a forty acre parcel of land that's completely landlocked in Copper Falls State Park, which was previously privately owned. It also happens to be on the Bad River. Um, they received a tentative award from the Knowles Nelson Conservation Grant Stewardship Fund that would help them pay back or pay off the mortgage that they have on this property. And the intention is to donate the forty acre parcel to the state to become part of Copper Falls State Park. In order to do that, the Conservation Grant Award requires that wherever the parcel is located, that the township and the city, if necessary, and the county are in support of it. This happens to fall in the township of Morse. They have already supported this process and now it's up to the county to provide support in order for them to receive the grant award and to donate it to the state. And there are two people here from the Friends Group if there are any questions.
Is there a motion?
You already did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marty.
Nice second.
And a second. Okay, questions?
Um, I just want to thank Mary Jo for her description of the whole thing and putting all the pieces together. I appreciate the little extra.
Any other questions? Ron, question? No. Hearing that, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, County Board approval of Planning Committee approved public participation plan for the twenty twenty-six comprehensive plan update. Mr. Bissé?
I'm not sure how everybody gets their news, but we don't have television. So when I wake up in the morning, I go online and I I go to YouTube, which streams all the different news services like NBC or Fox or BBC. And I usually go to YouTube because they stream all these different services. And I don't know if you're familiar with YouTube, but when you open up, there's a whole series of windows, maybe six or nine windows of different streamed services you can choose from. And usually one of those is active when you go online with YouTube. And when I got up this morning and I got my first cup of tea and sat down, I opened that up and usually one of those windows is active. And I heard this familiar voice. I said, well, that's my voice. And it was streaming our planning committee meeting from yesterday on YouTube. So the uh the efforts to raise the awareness in the public of uh our planning efforts for the comprehensive plan is, I I guess, underway. But uh it's necessary for us in order to engage with Northwest Regional Planning to have a public participation plan in place before they start. Now, the con, the grant from the state has been approved, so we'll have the funding. But we can't start using that grant with Northwest Regional Planning until we have a public participation plan, which has been approved and has been in the packet from the Planning Committee. Now, however, we had a a discussion yesterday and it was felt that maybe a little bit of clarification would be needed in addition to what's in the packet. And we decided that rather than change, try to change what's in the packet and publish, we would seek to amend the plan in this meeting today for approval. And I believe Mr. Kenny is prepared to provide that amendment.
Mr. Kenny?
Well, somewhat um ironically, the file wasn't in the packet today. Um, so if you go to the Plan Committee meeting from yesterday, you could pull this up. So the board hasn't had a chance to read this. We were anticipating yesterday it was in the packet and it wasn't until I was reading last night that I realized it didn't make the packet, but yep, right there. So the the version of public participation here is yesterday, we referred to it as a Cadillac plan. It's more than we have to do, but it leaves all options on the table. And we had a rather long discussion about whether we would leave everything in there as we see it or if we would shorten it up to something shorter, but still meet the state requirements. When we meet with Northwest Regional Planning next month in August, we'll start penciling in who's going to do what. And one of the things that we realized is with the public participation plan that you see in this document, um, there's a lot of things in there and they're all good, but the question is, who's going to do it? And so some of the things in here we may do or we may not do. And so yep, if we go to page three, I'm going to propose a change that we didn't vote on yesterday because we didn't want to update the document yesterday ahead of the meeting because then the packet wouldn't be correct and staff would have to deal with that. So if we go to page three, um, in there, um, going further down, are are we on page three that I'm going further up, sorry? So right at that point there, um, ahead of community display slash exhibit, from community display slash exhibit exhibit, there's a variety of ways that we could engage the public um for participation. And we are going to use some of those, but we probably aren't going to use all of them. In part because we don't know who's going to do what and there's limited resources and time. So what the committee expressed support for yesterday without a vote is, I'm going to make a motion here, is just ahead of community display slash exhibit, we put a standalone sentence that says, Ashland County is considering some or all of the following for public participation. Ashland County is considering some or all of the following for public participation. And that way, next month, we can decide which ones we're going to go forward with, at least tentatively. But we're not committed or obligated to doing all of these ways, given that we don't have people and resources to cover them all.
Mr. Bissé?
So the the committee unanimously in in uh support of this amendment. And I would uh would move that uh the amendment as read by Supervisor Kenny be adopted as an amendment to the public participation plan on which we will then vote in a succeeding vote. Is there a second?
So that is a motion?
My motion to approve this proposed amendment.
Okay, Mr. Kenny?
Well, I made the motion and you were going to second, right?
I'll be the second.
Yeah. I had already, I had already made the motion.
Laura?
And the only change you're looking for is that piece of amendment that you offered?
Yes, that would be the only change so that someone, we can modify this going forward, but we need to approve it today ahead of next month. And this way, it's clear to the public that we didn't promise we would do all of these. And then we have the latitude to pick the ones that we can find the time and resources for.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second to amend the Planning Committee Public Participation Plan. Any other questions? Pat?
I would just ask that after the vote, that this be added to the packet also for people.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, we'll add that and the amended version.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Okay. Administrator reports? Oops, I'm sorry, Mr. Bissé.
Move to approve the public participation plan as amended?
As amended, okay, so we need a motion to approve the plan as updated as amended.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Bissé makes that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Kenny? Oh, that's Marty? Marty seconds it? Questions on that? I'm sorry. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, thank you. Now Administrator updates.
Right, okay. I just got to briefly touch about a few things. A bunch of information about the state budget and federal budget is in the Finance Committee packet. If you want to, if anybody's interested in reading it. But I'm going to, so just a couple highlights from the federal thing that passed. One, municipal bonds are still going to be tax exempt. They were talking about not making them tax exempt, which is good for us. They cut, there's a lot, there's a lot of cuts to public health, nutrition, SNAP as we know it, emergency response, that'd be FEMA, and rural development. As far as the SNAP cuts, Extension lost two and a half people beginning October 1st. So, and then people are going to start seeing benefit cuts fairly in the next fiscal year. They, Congress added more administrative burdens to counties and states for Medicaid. So far, we don't think our Medicaid programs that we administer through DHS are going to be affected. But nobody's gone through that bill completely. We do know that DHS has said approximately 244 people in Ashland County will lose their health insurance as a result of the bill. There's cuts to SNAP administration, and the counties were, in the states where counties administer SNAP, that's us. We're one of the 10. So again, that's what I was talking about, more administrative costs. Let's see. And the state budget, there's some good news. They, Wisconsin didn't have a provider tax prior to this, and a provider tax is what states use to tax hospitals and nursing homes and like, to provide money to pay Medicaid, the state portion of Medicaid. For those who don't know, Medicaid is Badger Care in Wisconsin. So they instituted a tax in their budget, and right before the feds passed their budget, so it took effect. And they're going to have a little $1.6 billion to spend on Medicaid. So we may not in Wisconsin see effect, that many effects immediately, but we will see them eventually. We're expecting shared revenue to go up basically 3.4%. That's after the state made items non-taxable. It was going to be four point something, but the net effect is 3.4. So all counties, cities, towns, villages will see a 3.4% increase next year. They also created a special carve-out for counties. $2 million a year to be divided amongst the counties that have the headquarters of a federally recognized tribal nation. So that would be Ashland County as one of them. So we will be getting an extra $183,000 next two years. That's 2 million divided by 11. So that's, that's good news. Let's see. That's the basic basis. Space needs study is continuing. We're kind of at a standstill at this point, waiting to see what the next step is, steps are, and how we might do some reorganization with assets that we already have. But they have, I can get it, there's a report that they're preparing that I'll give to the county board as soon as we have it. I know, I'll take questions. Questions?
Bill?
How is the vacancy coming on the county board? That's my first question. And the second question I'm going to have is, can you give us an update on the visitor center?
Yeah, you're referring to District 12, the vacancy. Pat Big Boy talked about taking the seat. He has not committed to it yet, but I do know the tribal council wanted him to take that seat. I will give him a call again this week. He had some things to do up until this week. As far as the visitor center, I've talked to Baldwin's office and Tiffany's office several times about it. I believe Congressman Tiffany is trying to do something to keep the visitor center open seven days a week during the summer. There are issues there. The federal employees are not getting along well with the state employees. And I'm hearing lots of complaints from the state employees. So the congressman is going to be addressing that issue too. I basically made it clear to him, if he ever wants any hope of his national park to happen, he needs that visitor center open and running face forward. So that would be his first step. So he's taken a keen interest in it. Yeah, and I'll keep, I'll keep harassing him.
Before we go to county board supervisors, I'm going to get on my high horse here on something the administrator said. Anybody who thinks the cuts to Medicaid is a good thing is ill-informed. There's 10 million nationwide, 200 and some in the county, and I'll tell you exactly what's going to happen. Those people currently on Medicaid go to the doctor and clinic, and Medicaid pays for their cost. When they lose Medicaid, they're still going to the emergency room, the hospital, the doctors, and we're going to pay the cost, because they are not going to pay it. This is a problem we're going to see a year from now that somebody is going to regret. You cannot take Medicaid away from people and think they're not going to go to the doctor. And so everybody's cost is going up. It's one of the worst decisions ever made. And I dealt with medical assistance, Medicaid, Badger Care, all of those in my previous life, and it's better to have them have insurance of some sort than to have the hospital or clinic be able to bill no one except the rest of us that go. Cost of medical insurance is going up and up, and it's a huge problem. So thank you for letting me. Right, so.
So there were also cuts to the Affordable Care marketplace. So people who buy insurance on healthcare.gov are going to be facing much higher premiums as a result.
So now county board supervisors. Mr. Pessay?
So two things from the AG and UW Extension Committee to know that last week, our 4H program manager, Kate Wallner, resigned, so there'd be an empty slot there to be filled or not to be filled. And then from the planning committee to know that if you don't go on YouTube, you can go to the Ashland County main website and click on the planning icon. And there you will find not only the meeting minutes, but also the link to the full video presentations of each planning committee meeting. So if you're looking for some really high-strung, you know, entertainment, it's there for you.
Good, thank you, George. Fleet?
There's a large project right now going on out at the airport. We approved the allowance of letting trucks run down JFK Lane now. So that will dramatic, it was a $3.6 million project, and we only put up 5% of that. So overall, it's a good thing for the area, but it has impacted the revenues this year for the airport. So everyone should hear that now. Our revenues will be down, our costs likely for the county will be higher for 2025.
I have one quick other thing, and this is not on the agenda. Of course, I'm going to just give this information in this board meeting for our administrator to hear. I believe that we need to put speakers on these desks. With that air conditioner running and soft spoken people, but do the speakers actually work? Because I don't.
The speakers, I haven't seen them work.
Yeah, we should check that out, because it's easier to hear it. Go ahead, Laura.
You, you can actually plug a headset in here too.
Only you have to really, I did it for Dick once, and it's really tricky. It doesn't work at all of them, and.
I know I'm not IT, but I've been told that's user error.
No, it's not. I did it. Mr. Chairman, Finance Committee, Rachel had this on her, upgrading the system for 26, on her 26 budget. Finance Committee could move it up here to fund it in the next cutting budget.
Yeah, I just, like you say, sitting here, there are some folks in the air is one of the problems, that air blowing back in here, that noise. It's tough to hear people when they first talk, so. Yeah, we're going to get the old megaphone. So good, thank you. Other, Bill?
Maybe it would be a good idea to turn the air off in the meeting, and we could hear better. I have a heck of a time hearing Dan. I, you know, I cannot hear him. I get, I must need hearing aids, but I have a hard time.
Great. Mr. Kenny? Mr. Kenny?
Before the county spends money on updating these microphones and speakers and all that, having taught in many ITV classes over the years, there is some equipment that works really, really well. One example is a microphone in the middle of the room, and then speakers that work with that. If you have individual mics, which the tech school went away from, I don't know, it's getting to be a decade already, one of the issues you have is if a speaker is there, and I'm speaking into the microphone, you get feedback. And so sometimes the feedback problems get really difficult in a room, so. And I don't know if we replace the speakers here, and then it's tied to the rest of the equipment, but we really, really need to research well what equipment would be a good fit and address what's in here before we spend, I think it was 100 and some thousand dollars, if I remember, in the IT budget. And I'm not an IT person with sound equipment and TVs, but we need good advice.
Mr. Pessay?
I'd just like to point out that it works a lot better when people speak directly into the mic.
Hey, thank, thank you, George. Laura?
Okay, it's the only female in, well, on the board in the room at this point. Sometimes I have hot flashes, so I may disagree with you about the air conditioner. But also, hearing loss, especially with background noise, 30% of dementia starts with hearing loss. So if you do have some issues with hearing, please get the hearing aids, and please get that hearing checked if you're not sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, no other situations. We need the big motion. Motion to adjourn.
Next meeting.
Oh, next meeting. No, no meeting.